I would like to call this Village Board meeting of Thursday, October 16th, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Trustee Beacon?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Meritato? Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Madam President Giannelli?
Here. Tonight, our Safety Town Halloween volunteer groups will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you want me to roll you up here, Connie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And are we, is Tanya, are we having a brief introduction of the groups who came out tonight? Yeah, I would love that. That'd be great. Thanks.
You normal?
Yeah, I do. I do. Tonight, we have with us Chief Cassidy from the Glen Side Fire Department. We have DuCap. We have Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights. We have District 15. And we have CRDN of Chicago. And we have Romekstera. And we have Tanya Mackel.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Tanya, these organizations, these organizations represent a lot of, from the nonprofit space, just resource space, business space. And can you tell us a little bit, they come and volunteer at Safety Town? What goes into that? And what's that day like?
They do. So we started three years ago doing Safety Town, well, we started during COVID, doing Safety Town throughout the entire complex. And in doing that, we needed more people to hand out candy because we have more spots available. So we started asking people to volunteer for that. We allow them to decorate their own stations. And we now give trophies for first, second, and third place.
Oh, cool.
Best decor. And the fire department usually brings their ambulance. And they do a very good job. Everybody does a great job. And thank you very much for all of your support.
Yeah, thank you so much. Can we get a picture?
Say, Mayor, can I invite him up for us?
Yeah, please, come on up. I'm too short.
Come on over here.
Can you see me? Can you see Kim?
Move left.
I'm trying to hide.
She's hiding on purpose. Well, behalf of the Village Board, I just want to say thank you to these organizations. Tanya, thank you for the work that you put into it. Thank you for making the day special for our community. Community here in the room and at home, please join us for trick-or-treating at Safety Town. Thank you again, organizations. Executive Session. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2. Thank you. C2. At this time, we're going to recess to, we're going to recess the Village Board meeting to go to Executive Session. Is there a motion to recess to Executive Session?
Motion.
Trustee Beacon, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
This meeting is recessed. I would like to call this Village Board meeting back to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
We now move on to Petitions and Communications. Board Report. Trustee Beacon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for watching at home and for those who are joining us today. So mine is very simple. I went to our Board Workshop, which worked out great. We did a lot of work there. And I also learned a lot. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Matrasco.
Yes, I have to say, in the Board Workshop was definitely, a lot of information that we were able to come to agreements and be able to move things forward.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Meritato sends his love from Florida. Clerk Darlene.
I as well did the workshop. I also did bingo trivia, Studebakers, and I am researching a software product for our new Board Committee.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt?
No report.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Uh, no report.
Trustee Light?
No report.
Community, I wanted to share with you, on the heels of my colleagues discussing the workshop, I think it's important that our community is aware that we, as a Board, are doing the work that it takes to bring about the changes that we've heard from all of you. Whether it's about community development and economic growth, committees that are substantial, that will bring the voices of the community closer to the work that we're doing here. We're taking this work very seriously. We're putting the hours in and we're having robust conversations. So if you start hearing things about a comprehensive plan or a strategic plan, all of these things are important roadmaps that help us drive the businesses of the village. So I just want to thank the Board for, again, giving a Saturday of your time. I appreciate it, but I know the community certainly deserves it. I also want to just recognize that later on in the Committee of the Whole Meeting, we'll be doing some updates for the community related to parks and some of the developments and work that we're doing in some of our parks. Thank you. Community announcements. Village Administrator Flint.
Thank you, Mayor. The next coffee and chat with the Village President and Board will be Saturday, November 1st, at the Lyndon Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Village President or Village Board, please call the Village President's Office anytime, 630-909-5302, or contact your local district trustee.
Thank you. Director of Community Development, Jason Ember.
With the arrival of the fall season, the Village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are 15 feet from any structure, including fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glen Side Fire Protection District at 630-668-5323, or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at 630-894-9080. We would also like to remind residents that per Village Code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste onto Village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 26th, 28th, and 29th, depending on when your usual waste and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, please call Republic Services at 847-981-0091.
Thank you. Chief Gavas.
Thank you, Mayor. Tanya already talked about this, but this is our Safety Town Halloween. The Village of Glendale Heights is getting into the Halloween spirit. Halloween is on Friday, October 31st. We would like to remind all residents that trick-or-treating hours are from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Also, Halloween evening, we invite children 16 and under to come to trick-or-treating at Safety Town for our Safety Town Halloween trick-or-treating. Safety Town Halloween runs from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. For more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya Mackel at 630-909-5459. And next, our TL.Dot pledge for safe driving. The Village of Glendale Heights, the Glendale Heights Police Department, and our local school districts are teaming up to encourage everyone to take the TL.Dot pledge for safe driving. School is now back in session for all our Glendale Heights kids, and we are encouraging our drivers to put down their phone, keep their eyes on the road, slow down, and drive like your child lives here. TL.Dot stickers are available at the Village facilities, our school resource officers, and with our crossing guards. We encourage you to place these vinyl stickers on the corner of your back window of your car, the front windows of your home, or place a business as a reminder to drive safely. And remember, these are our roads, not our racetracks. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/TL.Dot.
Thank you, Chief. Director Canous?
Thank you, Mayor. Halloween in the Heights. Get in the spooky season and register your house for the Halloween in the Heights House Decorating Contest. Register your home through Sunday, October 19th, to compete for the spookiest and best decorated house in Glendale Heights. An interactive map with voting will be active starting October 22nd, and the winner will be announced on Halloween on the Village's Facebook page. For more information, please contact Louisa at 630-909-5339. And the Spooky Historic House Tour. Join us at the Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, October 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. for the Spooky Day Open House. The Historic House will be open for tours and feature some frightfully fun activities. The Historic House is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. For more information, please contact Trustee Michael Light at 630-909-5308, or Jessica at 630-909-5123.
Thank you. Director McCumber?
Thank you, Mayor. During the months of October and November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded, no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the Village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040.
Thank you. H.R. Manager Cahill?
The Village of Glendale Heights is now accepting applications for the Assistant Village Administrator position. This key member of the executive staff will provide special projects oversight, strategic planning and goals, provide administrative support over various departments, and serve as a liaison for residents and businesses within the village. Qualified applicants are encouraged to join the Village of Glendale Heights team. For more information or to apply, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr.
Purchasing Agent Garza?
Thank you, Mayor. Join us at Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mackel at 630-909-5459.
Thank you. Director Cravens?
Thank you, Mayor. Please join the Village Board, the Village of Glendale Heights Police and Fire Personnel, and the Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 for a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park as we honor all military personnel, past and present. The Veterans Day Ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Veterans Day, November 11th. The event includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and a tribute to our fallen warriors. Please note that all Village offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please call Jessica Marisich at 630-909-5123.
Thank you. Moving on to Proclamations. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of October 23rd to October 31st, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week, and a proclamation to proclaim October 31st, 2025, as Halloween Trick or Treat. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Public Discussion of Agenda Items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this Board on an agenda item only? You have the consent agenda before you, Board. Would Village Administrator Doug Flint please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular Board Meeting Minutes of October 2nd, 2025. Two, approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of October 2nd, 2025. Three, approval of the Special Village Board Meeting Minutes of October 11th, 2025. Four, approval of the October 10th, 2025 payroll and the accounts payable listing of October 16th, 2025, total amount of $3,233,451.27. Five, an ordinance to amend Section 11-10(c)(3) entitled Conditional Uses of Article C entitled C3 General Commercial District, Chapter 10 entitled Commercial Districts of Title 11, entitled Zoning of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, firearm sales within their shooting range/training. Six, an ordinance to amend Section 11-10(c)(3) entitled Conditional Uses of Article C entitled C3 General Commercial District, Chapter 10 entitled Commercial Districts of Title 11, entitled Zoning of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, EV charging stations with accessory uses. Seven, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the Special Tax Allocation Fund for and/or from proceeds of an obligation issued if any in connection with a proposed tax increment financing district commonly described as the East Army Trail Road Development Project Area from the 10-2 2025 COW. Eight, a resolution authorizing the purchase of bulk rock salt for use within the Village of Glendale Heights. Nine, a resolution approving the authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Security Integrator Services Agreement by and between Low Voltage Solutions Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights. Ten, a resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number one, final, with Hoar Construction Incorporated for the 2025 Mill Pond Drive Culvert Rehabilitation Project in the Village of Glendale Heights. Eleven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award purchase order for the purchase of replacement pumps for the wastewater treatment plant. Twelve, a resolution determining the estimated property taxes to be levied for the 2025 tax year of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Thirteen, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Council 31, AFL-CIO Local 3768. Fourteen, approval of pay request number one, final, to Hoar Construction Incorporated for the Mill Pond Rehabilitation Project, total amount not to exceed $302,460. Fifteen is approval of consent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the Board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Beacon. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Old business, there is none. Oh, sorry, the consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business. Item one. A motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two? Trustee Light?
Motion to waive first reading on item number two.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item number two is approved. Item number two. An ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of Lane Christiansen Company for the inspection of emergency well number 12, and authorize the execution of a contract by and between Lane Christiansen Company and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-49. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-49?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui. Second. Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-49 is approved. Public Discussion of Agenda Items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this Board on an agenda item only? At this time, we will recess the Village Board meeting and go to the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to recess to the Committee of the Whole meeting?
Mayor, I think it's a motion, if you do a motion to adjourn, to adjourn, because we're not going back.
We gotta go to the cowl.
We're gonna go to the cowl.
Oh, we're gonna go, okay, never mind. Sorry.
No, no.
Never mind.
You're good.
My brain.
Okay, so a motion to recess to Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Light. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
This meeting is recessed. Trustee Beacon, you have the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are we going to Executive Session?
No.
After cowl.
That was my mistake.
After cowl.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, I'd like to call this Committee of the Whole meeting, Thursday, October 16th, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions or additions? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, discussion of easements versus rights-of-way.
Anyone else? All right. Committee reports. Glen Lakes Golf Club Committee. Where's Pat?
No report.
No report.
Historical Committee?
Yes. Just to remind everybody again, spooky open house is October 25th from 5:30 to 7:30. If you want, bring the kids in their costumes. We have a lot of great places for pictures. Wonderful time for everybody. Bring out your best ghouls and goblins and get some good pictures. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Ordinance Committee?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week, but otherwise, no report.
Yeah, October 30th.
October 30th, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Parks and Recreation Committee?
In Mr. Trustee Meritato's absence, I think we do want to give an update together with Director McCumber?
Yes. So if we're referring to the parks?
Correct, yeah. Specifically, community, there was concerns raised about some of the maintenance and condition of parks here in town. One specifically that I asked our team to address was in Ruskin Park and the work that's being done there. So essentially, what we want to do is just make sure the community is aware of the status of some of those developments, that the chief concerns were just around weeds and just maintenance of the creek, creek bank.
Correct.
So I was hoping that we could get some updates.
So, yes, I met with Parks Manager, I met with the Deputy Director as well. We walked the site. We did find some issues that I wouldn't say are alarming or concerning, but maybe a slight lack of maintenance that is going to be addressed.
Okay.
There were some other bigger item things that we're still going to discuss a little further. And I also discussed the maintenance of the channel and tried to talk with Vince, and some of the concerns, I guess, are, I believe the channel probably doesn't look as slightly as most people would expect it to. But that channel was planted like that for a reason, and it's maintained still. We have it under contract to have that maintained. So they'll come in and they'll take out unwanted species of plants and grasses. They'll keep it up to par with what our grant requirements are, best management practices. Remove any unwanted trees, things like that, reestablish things. They even do a controlled burn if it's necessary in occasion.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm hoping, we can make sure the Board has a chance to understand, is that because some of this predates us, that the details behind, it's my understanding that we were, we collectively, the villages awarded a grant
Yes.
for planting of certain native species to encourage...
It was the whole park, the whole park was redone, like an exercise path, an educational path.
And because of...
The native plantings.
The native plantings, that's it. Because of the nature of that grant, we are, you know, expected to maintain this, this type of a...
Well, without, yes, without jeopardizing potential future grant funds, you want to maintain that as intended, I guess, would be the better...
So I think the mention, excuse me, the message here, Board, that I just want to make sure that we all have a chance to understand is that we are asking our Parks Team and more broadly, Public Works, just to really take a solid look at all of the parks, of course, but like specifically within Ruskin, you know, what are the things that we can get, do to get more to a proactive approach versus reactive, and just have more of a regular maintenance schedule that will take into consideration, you know, the concerns that we're hearing.
Yeah, and there's a couple of things I'm going to discuss with Doug about trying to improve the regular maintenance, and that has to do with budgetary things that are probably a different conversation than
Got it.
here right now. But we're moving in that path, and matter of fact, now that Scott's here, it'll probably give us a chance to both collaborate and have some better ideas.
Thank you, Director. Trustee?
Yeah. Jeff, question for you. This, I don't, I know you weren't around when that grant was taken care of and put into that park, but does that...
Or is here.
Well, were you part of it?
I wasn't part of it, but...
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
My question being is, does that grant include the entrance on Fullerton into the parking lot? Is that part of the grant, or can we update that entrance?
Are you talking about, I'm sorry to cut you off, but when you go in on each side of the entrance? Is that what you're talking, referring to?
Yeah, that parking lot area, because the entrance there just, it does look a little overgrown in the front.
Okay.
And it's a lot of maintenance to keep up with that. Is there something we can look at, maybe a low maintenance type of idea?
So the initial idea of that entrance was, what was planted there was not to require maintenance. It wasn't going to require watering. It may have required some weeding, but once those plants were established, you probably shouldn't have had to touch it, except for you cut it down seasonally. I've been informed, and, well, just by working here, I know that a lot of those plants got removed, and then other plants were put in. So I would say I'd have to look at the project file, which actually I have up. And the project goes back, dates back to 2007. I can look at the planting schedule, and we can see if there'd be any, I don't, I don't think there'd be an impact if it's just the front. I think the main concern, as far as the grant, people are concerned, would be in the middle of that parking lot, there's a bioswale.
Right.
And then the creek line. But we can definitely look into, you know, modifying those two mounds on the, each side of the entrance off Fullerton, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I mean, the first initial impact, when you hit the park, is what you see.
Right.
The rest of the park, I find, is beautiful. I really do like that park a lot. It's very well laid out and very well done. But that impact pulling in, it just, it does, it needs something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much for that. Property Enhancement Committee?
So there's a meeting on the 20th, this Wednesday, for property enhancement, and that's all I've got right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Matrasco. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
No report.
Thank you. Discussions regarding, there is none. Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt, for easement.
Okay. Recently, we had a meeting with residents, and with the discussions that went on, it seemed to be, to me anyway, that there's some lack of clarity between a differentiation between a right-of-way and an easement. So Peter, if you would, please, can you explain the difference?
Yes. We'll start with right-of-way, which pretty much everybody understands is usually a use for a public entity, for people to traverse back and forth. Rights-of-way are created three ways, usually. Under common law, it could be, everybody's always used this path to travel somewhere, and the owners have allowed it, so under common law, it becomes a public right-of-way. The most common way is when somebody plats a subdivision, or they create new, you know, new areas of land, it's platted, and in the platted, it'll say dedicated as a public right-of-way. And forever, that'll be a public right-of-way. There are less common ways. An easement can be a public right-of-way. It's a lot more rare. Not too many people do it, but it's just an easement for the public to transgress back and forth. So that's what a public right-of-way is for. And that right-of-way consists of usually the paved surface and unpaved surface, which we have in our roads, and then we have our parkways. That has to be a right-of-way. Easements can be public, or they can be private. And they could be for different purposes. There could be easements for ingress and egress, so allowing you to cross somebody's property just to get somewhere. It could be for putting underground utilities.[1788.22] It could be for anything that you could really think of that you would need access to somebody else's land. And that's granted through the right of an easement. An easement can be for your exclusive use or it could be for a use, and then somebody else could have an easement over that same property as long as it doesn't interfere with the use that you have, that you've been permitted to do. Does that kind of cover it or are there any more questions that you would have?
Okay, I guess summarizing it in layman's terminology, in my terminology, a right of way is public property owned by a municipality or a government entity.
Correct.
A, an easement is private property where access has been granted through some contractual means.
Correct. It could be a planted easement, it could be just an easement agreement. Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Sorry if I got too detailed.
Oh, no, I'm just, you know, trying to make sure I have it set in my mind too, so, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for that. Public comment. Can I please have Mr. Robert Ray?
Yes. Thanks for having me. Name's Robert Ray. I live at 384 Loveland. We've been, my wife and I have been residents for 47 years. My profession before I retired was as a journalist, worked at Channel 5. So I like to ask questions and I got one here for you. I'm going to go ahead and read it. "I'm sure you've seen some of the confrontations in Cook County between the public and federal immigration enforcers. Some were of a continuing nature, like in broad view, others were spur of the moment, like in the southeast Chicago neighborhood. Here in Glendale Heights, about one-third of our residents are immigrants, including my wife, so I don't think I'm paranoid about at least the potential of ICE coming here. In the event of a confrontation, my question is, does our police department have a plan on how to reduce the potential for violence without infringing on the right to peaceful assembly? Chief Poppis spoke to me earlier tonight and gave me a rundown on what could happen. I hope he could go ahead and repeat that to the general public at this point."
All right, thank you, Mr. Ray. So what Mr. Ray is talking about, it's all over the news. And in Glendale Heights, if an incident like that would occur in Glendale Heights, I'd like to explain to them, Mr. Ray, everybody has a right to free speech. It's a First Amendment right and as long as it's a civil protest, they should be allowed to do that. Everybody should be allowed to do that, that's what America's made for. If it gets into a situation where there might be something criminal in nature, it has to be stopped. So what would happen is there has to be some sort of separation, is what we talked about too. So you don't want it to raise to the level where people get arrested or people get hurt or property gets damaged. So you try to do the separation. In Glendale Heights, just like any other DuPage area, we have mutual agreements. So if there's a big event that happens here, we can have other officers come assist us as we can go assist other agencies. I explained to Mr. Ray that we have two officers that were, are on ILEUS Mobile Field Force. What Mobile Field Force is, is there's a group that, Northern Illinois, and they go to protests. So they're crowd control. They're there to try to get both sides to calm down for the situation so nobody gets hurt. So to answer your question is yes, we do have plans in place. It's something that we practice throughout our career. We have different assignments that we do too. So we also have people, like I spoke earlier, that are negotiators too, that are good at speaking with people. All of our officers are crisis intervention trained, so we learn to talk people down. And like I said earlier, the best way to communicate, there's going to be differences all over the state. You never want it to raise the level of violence. You try to get people to talk it out. Sometimes it goes to violence, you just try to bring it down a little bit. But I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, just one quick follow-up. ICE doesn't give you word of when they're coming, right?
No, there's an agreement, it's called the Trust Act. So the Trust Act, everything that for detainers are civil, that's federal civil orders. Illinois law enforcement agencies aren't involved in that. We don't know when they'll be anywhere. We usually find out from the residents after the fact. They'll call and say, there was somebody that was over here. Do you guys know about this? That's how we find out about it in local law enforcement.
I mean, how many, you don't have to tell me how many, but could you have a sizable number of officers available on emergency if something like that happened? To separate the groups?
Yeah, so what, yeah, we, yes, it could be the whole county. So we, like personally, like our radios, we share with Bloomingdale, but there's also channels on there that we hear everybody else. Like for me, I always listen to the other agencies and our fire department too. So we have those all going at the same time. Our dispatch centers, there's generally two dispatch centers throughout DuPage County and that makes it a lot easier for everybody because...
So you get a lot of help.
Yes.
We also belong to ILEUS, right, which is chief or one of his sergeants, if we have a major incident, can call our comm center and go, I need ILEUS Level 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 call-out. And depending on what level call-out they get, we get automatic response from the connecting communities immediately. And then if it gets bigger than that, then it's the connecting communities and old communities. And eventually, you know, Downers Grove earlier this summer had almost every agency in DuPage County there. Right? But in like real time because you have lights and sirens and police cars and...
Yeah, so it's quick.
You can get there.
Okay, thanks very much.
I can have a quick question.
Yeah.
So my question is, to our police, how can we discipline ICE? I mean, I know, today I heard from the news that the judges, they did not even follow the judges' order. The judges asked them to do not disperse crowd with heavy and, you know, with those means and also they want them to wear the camera. So let's say, I'm not that much worried about the people who are demonstrating, who are just using their First Amendment right, but on the contrary, what we are seeing is those heavy, the way they handle the ICE, first of all, they do not recognize them, they are wearing masks. They do not show any identity. So at that time, how, can we discipline ICE or how can we, without breaking the federal law, basically?
So the rules of federal agencies work are similar to other state agencies, but they have their own that they follow. If there's a misconduct by an officer from the Villages, of Glendale's Police Department, it goes through us, but it also can go through the state too. The same thing works with the federal agencies. So if there's something that they find that's wrong, it runs through that federal agency. Now, every officer in the state of Illinois and every federal agent has a duty to intervene. So if there's something illegal, then stop the thing illegal from happening. But as disciplinary wise, it comes down to that agency to do the disciplinary parts on them. Judges, if, if the judges, every officer in the state of Illinois, when they're on duty, actually they have to wear body cams. That's not the same for the federal agencies. So there's things that you have to weigh back and forth. There's rules that they follow that are different than ours.
There's a, we have a internal policy that says you have a duty to intervene like the chief said. That means if one of our police officers sees another police officer, regardless of local, state, federal, using excessive force or abusing somebody in any way that might be criminal, they have a duty to step in and stop that.
Okay.
Right? Regardless of what agency you work for or whether it's, again, local, state, or federal, they have a duty to stop criminal behavior, right? You know, hopefully none of that ever gets to that place in Glendale Heights, but every police officer has that responsibility to, to not allow a misuse of force to take place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that and for the information. Is there anyone else who would like to address this board?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir. State your name, sir.
Hello, my name is Azim Musain. Live on Greenborough subdivision. I have an ongoing issue that is going on for a while now about my neighbor's sump pump discharging on my backyard. I have a concern. I was here last time in the meeting and in the court too. So they, I'm still concerned about that. They are not complying. The pipe, I found out today, I had to take care of some of my grading problem in my backyard. So I already hired somebody. So I found out the pump, my neighbor's sump pump is not even connected. So it's not raining for the last few days now and my backyard is still wet. So the sump pump is still discharging in my backyard. They are not complying. So I would like to set up a meeting with the engineer and Tom and Public Works. We need to discuss with the guy who I just hired for the grading work. So is there any way we can set up a meeting so we can all sit down and get it over with? This is my request.
Yeah, I think that we can certainly do that. I think pulling in the right folks from our public works, but also community development, just to make sure that we understand.
Yes.
And just to give you a brief history, Mr. Azim lives in my district and I've been following on that. So he spent quite a bit money on trying to, because he has a grandson who comes on his backyard and a couple of times they fell, it comes, it comes to a kind of like a safety issue to him because that pipe, that water which is coming from that sump pump dampens that area and that area has now mosquitoes and it's kind of like a, just damp all the time. And so what he did is he hired a landscaper who did a job instead of, you know, making it a smooth, it's like the village engineer comes and he said, it's basically makes it above the ground. So they need to remove that grading or whatever. So now, Mr. Azim went back to the same landscaper and he's going to charge him again, but he said, okay, now I want to meet with your village engineer so he can tell me what I need to do. So that's where what I think his concern is that if we can have a meeting with him and that landscaper, so we can, they can, the engineer can tell him that what needs to be done and at the same time, they can check the sump pump issue as well. So I think, what's his name, Kaiten?
So, have you had your backyard regraded yet?
Pardon me?
Have you had the backyard regraded yet?
No, I'm still trying to get it done.
Okay, well, your backyard's not going to dry until that hump comes out.
Uh...
Because the water is just collecting at that hump.
The water is coming out from the neighbor's sump.
Yeah, I know, but it's not draining in through your backyard because the elevation changed when you're, when you're...
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, no, that's, that's...
Oh, actually...
But we can set up a, we can set up a meeting with you,
Yeah.
but our engineer is not going to tell you exactly what you need to do and give you grade, right? Because that is a, that's not what we do, right? He's going to tell you, he's told you that you need to flatten out your backyard and return it back to its original state.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that. I'm already talking to my landscaper.
Right.
But the, but the issue, my neighbor's problem is still there.
Right, but the water's not draining into your backyard because you still have that, that, that sway, the swale was removed and your yard was, was hired, lack of a better word, was raised in the construction of your drainage.
See, my, my neighbor is, is on my, on my left, which is 1012. Mine is 1016.
Right.
His sump pump is discharging middle of the yard.
Right.
The rainwater goes, you know, a little bit further down by the wall.
Unfortunately, your yard is, like my yard is in my house, is the center point of drainage.
Yes.
And it drains out to the storm system through your backyard. When your landscape changed and your backyard got raised even inches, that water is not flowing the way it's supposed to flow.
But it didn't even rain for many days now.
I know, but the sump pump's still going off.
Yeah.
Right.
So the, the issue's still there from the...
I know, but it's a drainage issue, it's not a sump pump issue.
So why don't we have a, you know, set up a meeting?
Okay, sure, yeah, we can go over.
Let's do this.
Yeah, we can.
So Public Works, we did provide some recommendations.
Okay.
We drafted up a letter, told him what his landscaper needs to do, but I mean, we will, we can definitely meet with him again because we, we even suggested several inspections to make sure that whatever he decided to do, you know, it's kind of up to him. The main thing was to change the grade. But it wasn't just changing grade. When that landscaper came out, he put an underdrain in. So when he put the underdrain in, there's two things going on here. The underdrain was installed at too high of an elevation and then when he graded it, it's too high and it's not to the plat of subdivision. So there is grade on the plat of subdivision that his contractor will have to follow. If he chooses to keep that underdrain in, it's going to have to be set to the right elevation, it's going to have to be backfilled properly and so on and so forth, and that should solve his problem. We did provide those recommendations.
So can someone provide that to his landscaper? That's, because that's what the landscaper does.
Absolutely. We, he wants, we can, we can meet again.
Yeah, so that's what the, you know, his landscaper said that, oh, I did according to the building code, but he's saying that, no, the village is saying no. So maybe the lands, I think there's a landscaper and engineer can talk to each other and tell them, hey, you know what, this is what we are looking for.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Not a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Okay. No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Jeff, you want to make arrangements with them to set up the meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this board? Say your name, please.
Marietta Britt, Brittany Court. Two things. A few weeks ago, I mentioned about some e-bikes at Brittany, no, Cardinal and Army Trail. There were five kids, well, five bikes, six riders, and they got the light. Well, no, I got the turn light and instead of them waiting, they just started zooming in my pathway. Fortunately, I hesitated, I did not hit them. But what I did do was I sent a picture of those young men to the chief in Bloomingdale and I said, Frank, I think these are your kids, you need to do something about it. Last week, I'm sitting at the same intersection and two people on the sco, on scooters, I'm sorry, not the scooters, the two-wheel things did the exact same thing. Almost cut out in front of me. I'm a diligent driver, but not everyone is. Someone is going to get hit. And unfortunately, those of us who are driving are going to be blamed for it. I am letting the village know that this is a bad, this is a terrible problem and it's unfortunate if someone ends up getting hurt. The last thing, same intersection, I was sitting right at Fallbrook, getting ready to get on the Cardinal and I saw this car coming down Cardinal, zooming down the street. And he was trying to beep the light. Light was red. It was, there was no question about it. He went through the intersection, made the left turn, and this, this happens regularly. As much as I'm putting in a camera on my car, but this is a setting up for a disaster. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up.
We're working with Trustee Matrasco on a solution to that. And hopefully in our next road program next year, you'll have a solution.
Okay, but in the meantime, I, I'm afraid of what might happen.
We outlaw e-bikes.
I'm sorry?
We've outlawed e-bikes.
Yeah.
Bloomingdale's outlawed e-bikes.
Yeah, but someone needs to get these parents to understand. Because these kids are not following, are not following any rules of the road. They're just acting like they're on bicycles and... They're just acting like they're on bicycles and-
Right, it's like the Wild West.
It, it, it really is.
So thank you for bringing this. Ultimately, to, um, Doug's point, we did pass that ordinance recently for outlawing the e-bikes. What I will say, just to reiterate, I know we talked about it briefly at that meeting, but there will be a robust socialization program around this. So now that it's passed, what that's gonna look like is making sure, A, we've educated our, our staff, right, our, our police staff, the school, but we're gonna start utilizing the, the vehicle of schools, of our various partners, but really getting the message out to parents about the impact because the impact is going to be things like those bikes getting confiscated, those, those e-bikes or those scooters and having some sort of a financial impact for, for these children who are too young to be driving these, these vehicles that drive fast. So it's just, we're, we're starting, we're in the infancy of that right now of getting that message out, um, but it's gonna, it's gonna take some time, but we, we're gonna get there where we're holding them accountable because you're right, it's going to come at the, the cost of a life.
It, it'll come at the cost of a life and then that person who's driving, they've gotta deal with that.
Yeah.
And then no telling what kind of financial implications come from it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Back to order, will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Executive session, the appointment, employment, executive session, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to open meetings, Act 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C1. At this time, we'll adjourn the village board meeting to go to executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Thank you, trustee, trustee Matrasco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, call the roll, please. Thank you, yeah, call the roll.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Madam President Giannelli?
Um, yes, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.